Very pleasant good evening to you. We will open our regular meeting for Tuesday, October the 15th. We do have a healthy agenda tonight. We have seven presentations. We have one public hearing, 11 consent agenda items, one item for decision. And we will begin our meeting by calling the chaplain, William Robertson of Broaden Hospital, for invocation. And that will be followed by two pledges. Pledge of Allegiance by Josh Dula, Student Government Association of WA Young Elementary. And the principal there is Randy Sane, who is here with us also. We appreciate it. If you'll stand with me, please. Invite you to join with me in prayer, beginning with a brief moment of silence. Almighty God, our Creator, we glorify your name and we thank you for the countless blessings you offer us so freely. We thank you for this beautiful new day and for calling all of us your children. Now, we pray that you would bless our community and send down upon those who hold office in Burke County, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Josh, if you'll come up and remain standing, and we'll let the four H'ers come up and do the four H' pledge allegiance, and then come down and have a picture made with you.
Attention, so we pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
and my health to better living, for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
Item four on the agenda is approval of many meeting minutes. We have three, a special meeting on August the 6th, regular meeting August the 20th, and pre-agenda on September the 3rd. And I think we can take all those at once with, provided there's no correction or additions.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no deletions or corrections, I make a move to approve the minutes as printed.
Thank you. All those in favor, would you raise your right hand? Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Again, Mr. Chairman, if there's no changes, a motion to approve the agenda is printed.
Thank you, Wayne. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Presentations. Number one, is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week Proclamation. And that is presented by Joe Marks, Executive Director of The Meeting Place.
Good evening, distinguished commissioners. My name is Joe Marks, and I'm here not as a representative of The Meeting Place, but rather our Burke Continuum of Care, which is a number of organizations, churches, and individuals who care about the less fortunate and those that are currently homeless. And this is Tina Willis, who represents Partners, who is also part of that same continuum. And what we humbly ask for is that you proclaim the week of November 16 through the 23rd, Burke County Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, to coincide with the National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. We have a number of events planned for that week to bring awareness to individuals so that we can continue to find help and do our work to take people from the streets, from tents, from the woods, and get them into self-sufficiency. Some of those things are, we're going to have a flash mob, and is, well, maybe that's not the right wording, that's what we're calling it, but we're going to have people on the square early in the morning here in Morganton. We're going to have people downtown in Valdez early in the morning carrying cardboard signs, you know, asking people, "Am I homeless? Do I look homeless?" And we'll have a mixture of people who are currently homeless or in shelters. Just to bring awareness to it, we're going to paint the town purple, we'll have purple ribbons throughout the town, which is the color of homelessness. We have, and everybody that I really hope can make this, on Wednesday at 3:30 to 5:00 at Western Pea Mountain Community College, at the Leviton Theater, we're having a small skit to depict homelessness. It's an individual experience homelessness. It's going to be performed by the troupe. And then, more importantly, we're going to have a forum of either people who are currently homeless or formerly homeless interviewing and talking to people about what that's like and what their experiences are. So with that, I'll shut up because I know you've got a big agenda, and I just ask again that you proclaim that week Burke County Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. Thank you.
Joe, may I ask you to read one of the whereas, how about the third one? And the main reasons for that is to give all those entities acknowledgement that they're the ones that's doing this good work in Burke County. And I think it's important that those names be recognized.
Thank you, I will. Whereas, there are many organizations committed to sheltering, providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to people experiencing homelessness, including Alpha Burke Council on Alcoholism and Chemical Dependency, Burke Public Schools, Burke County United Way, Burke United Christian Ministries, Catawba Valley Behavioral Healthcare, Christ Center Recovery Program, Easter Seals UCP, House of Refuge, North Carolina Vocational Rehabilitation Options, Inc., Partners Behavior Health Management, The Cognitive Connection, The Meeting Place Mission, The Outreach Center, Universal Mental Health, Veterans Representatives, and many more community partners.
Thank you very much. Any comment, any question from commissioners? Tina Willis, we didn't mean to leave your name out. We're glad you're here. Question or comment?
I'm glad she's here, too.
Yeah. If no comment, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept this presentation and proclaim Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 16 to 24, 2013, proclamation number 201308.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other question or comment? Before we take a vote, how about a round of applause for all these agencies doing that good work? All those in favor, would you raise your right hand, please? Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. Second presentation of financial data for the period of July 1, 2013, through September 13th. And this is presented by Keith Lawson, that's Burke County Public School Finance Officer. Keith?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you again today. Per our board adopted resolutions pertaining to this year's budget, I'm here to report our quarterly results, as we discussed earlier today in our joint quarterly meeting. What we have here, the first category, Purpose Function 5100, which represents regular instructional services. You all this year have funded $4,330,985. Through the first quarter, we have expended $442,879. Now, the areas that this funds primarily are, one, the STEAM Academy. I saw Senator Daniel, he's here with us tonight. I know he attended that open house, and Mr. Carswell, I think you did, I saw you there. Wasn't there for the entire open house of the STEAM Academy, so I'm not sure if any of the others, any of the others of you visited, but I certainly invite you to come visit that facility on the campus of NCSD. As Mr. Putnam alluded to earlier today, we've been working very intensely with local companies and touring their facilities, and now we're in the process of arranging for those companies to come tour the STEAM Academy to help develop that curriculum, so then in the future, we can meet the needs of our local industry. That also funds teacher supplements, mileage for teachers. In recent years, what we've begun to do is, when at all possible, we'd split a teacher between schools, rather than having a teacher at each school when they didn't necessarily have full schedules. So that also serves to reimburse the mileage for teachers traveling between those schools. Also funds instructional supplies and library books. The next category, 5300 Purpose Function, you all this year are funding $341,824. Of that, we have expended $49,926. We have been operating the Halliburton Alternative School for several years now, and it's been operating under a SIG grant. Those funds are now going away, so we have looked to you all to help support that program. That serves children that would not otherwise be successful in a typical high school setting. Has a great graduation rate for many children that otherwise probably would never graduate high school. The next category would be the 5500 Purpose Function. That consists of extracurricular supplements. That would serve to pay supplements to our dedicated teachers that stay after school and spend nights and weekends coaching our sports teams, supporting our band programs, et cetera. Now, you all are funding $57,801 of that, but the total budget for that category is $705. This was our balancing category in order to balance out your allocation to us this Next category would be 5800 Purpose Function. What that pays for are seven school nurses. In addition, we receive a grant through the Department of Health and Human Services that is capped at $100,000. Those two nurses in those positions exceed that in salary, so it also picks up that additional salary, which is about another $36,000. Then in addition to that, it also pays for our nine new SROs that have been brought in to the school system this year. The next category is 6500 Purpose Function, which is maintenance and facilities, and pays for operations such as utilities, et cetera. That's $8,202,000, of which we've expended $2,565 at this point. Now, let me point out there, that's not our total operational cost of facilities, as I discussed today with you, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair. We spend a little over $3 million annually in custodial services in the school system. That is an operational expense, but we pay that from state funds, and the reason we do so is, any position that is paid from state funds, the state covers their workers' comp premium. Therefore, we keep our workers' comp premiums down in our local budget by funding those positions from the state rather than local. Then our final category would be the 8100 Purpose Function. That's $409,328 this year, and that pays primarily for per pupil, your per pupil allotment that we turn and give to New Dimension Charter School. And then also, we have 78 students that live in the Jonas Ridge area of the county, and because of that geographic location, there's an agreement that they attend Avery County Schools rather than Burke County. And the reason that number is so high is, we do not fund, unlike the charter schools, we're not allowed to fund Avery County Schools at the local appropriation of Burke County's level, but rather Avery County's level. That being said, your total appropriation and budget to us for the year is $14,038,400. And of that, we've expended $3,265,937. Now, I'll point out, that's not, if you simply annualize that out, it appears that we're under budget. But keep in mind that the bulk of our budget is salary-related, and the fact that the bulk of our staff and activities are going on during school, and school is 10 months, not 12, you'll see in the second quarter that those expenditures will escalate greatly.
Question or comment to Keith?
Keith, as we discussed today, I'd like to, a little clarification for the remainder of the board and for the audience here. This is just local money that Burke County has given to the school system. Could you kind of speak to the federal, the state, and the grant portion of the funding that will come to the schools?
Okay, we do, of course, receive state funding, and that's the bulk of our budget, also federal funds. As we discussed today, the federal funding at this time, except for just a few categories, is really up in the air with us at this time due to what's going on in Washington. Some of those funds are guaranteed, some aren't, and in current, we're having to basically float a lot of what are typically federal expenditures until we receive those funds. And I might add, if we receive those funds.
That's one of the reasons I wanted you to do that. How about our state money?
Our state money, we have received an initial allotment, and of course, we are operating on that, and it's sufficient that there's no float needed whatsoever. That's funded fully as we expend that, and don't anticipate any issues from our state allotment.
Thank you.
Now, there are certain state categories that we receive additional allotments as the year progresses, but we don't have those at this time.
All right. Any other question or comment?
Mr. Chairman, when everybody else is finished, I just want to touch on one thing.
Say again.
When everyone else is finished, I just have something to add.
Okay. Anyone else? Chair will recognize our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The display you have here was one of the initial documents, expel sheets that we got from the school system, and the actual amount that we were trying to show you was the 14-some million dollars of local county dollars and not some of the other budgetary figures, so I apologize if that's a little bit confusing. We'll have that cleaned up at the next quarterly report, but thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We really don't need to take an action. Does this, Madam Clerk, I guess maybe JR, will this end up in our minutes, whether we take action or not?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to the next one. Resolution in support of National Breast Cancer Awareness Week, Month, excuse me, and our own Vice Chairman Carswell will present that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The National Breast Cancer Awareness Month Organization is a partnership of national public service organizations, professional medical associations, and government agencies working together to provide breast cancer awareness, share information on the disease, and provide greater access to the screening services. This is an annual international health campaign organized by major breast cancer charities every October, and since its inception more than 25 years ago, NBCAM has been at the forefront of promoting awareness of breast cancer issues, education, and empowerment to women to increase their knowledge of the disease and to raise funds for research into its cause, its prevention, its diagnosis, its treatment, and its cure. I would like to tell you folks in the audience that it is estimated that this year, and this year alone, there will be 232,340 new cases of invasive breast cancer that's been diagnosed in women around the United States. 64,640 new cases of N2T breast cancer, to include ductal carcinoma and lobular carcinoma, which is the carcinoma that inflicted my wife, which is, only inflicts about 15% of the women in the United States. Over 64,000 cases will be reported, and there will be 39,620 breast cancer deaths this year. I'm so proud of the fact that we have such a great cancer center in Burke County at Valdez General, and I'm proud to say that my wife is in her fourth year of remission from breast cancer, and we're so proud of that. I lost my mother this year to part of breast cancer and liver cancer, so it is one of those things that we deal with, but we've done a good job, and I just hope, and I praise you gentlemen for wearing your pink tonight, and our county staff are wearing their pink in support of the Breast Cancer Awareness Week. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2013-41, declaring National Breast Cancer Awareness Month of October in Burke County.
And just before we do that, how many people could raise their hand that has a survivor in their family of cancer? How about raising your right hand? That's great. Most of you know I'm from a large family, 16 brothers and sisters. Three of my brothers and one sister are survivors of cancer, so it's touching all of us. All in favor of this resolution, please raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is resolution of appreciation and support of Western Youth Institute employees. And since Johnny works there, Johnny, you're going to do that for us.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask for a point of personal privilege.
Okay.
I'd like to ask Ms. Barbara Bellis, Superintendent of Western Youth Institution, and Mr. Carlos Hernandez, Assistant Superintendent of Western Youth Institution, and Senator Warren Daniel, if you would come forward, please. And if there are any members of Western Youth that are here would like to come up with us, you're both welcome to do that.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will bear with me for this resolution, if the chairman will give me permission again, I'd like to read this resolution.
Yes.
Burke County, North Carolina, resolution, whereas the high-rise prison concept was originated by State Commissioner of Corrections Lee Bounds in 1967, and it was decided by Commissioner Bounds to place the first high-rise prison in Burke County, North Carolina. And whereas, according to an early article in the local Morganton News Herald that read, there has never been such a unit created within North Carolina's prison system. As its 16 stories cause it to differ structurally from the traditional one-story road camps or local prisons, it also differs in concept from the peneology of a generation ago. The Western Correctional Center, as it was known by then, embodies the latest thinking in inmate care as arrived at by North Carolina Commissioner V. Lee Bounds and other leaders in the field. Pardon me. And whereas, in July 1970, Commissioner Bounds appointed Dr. James C. White, Jr., a clinical psychologist and Western Area Administrator, the additional responsibility of Superintendent of the soon-to-be-completed Western Correctional Center. Dr. White and a small planning staff, including Captain George Green, business manager Tom Corley, program assistant to Bob Smith, Education Director Sarah Whitley, Captain Mac Jarvis, and Administrative Assistant Billy Cox began work in temporary offices at Broaden Hospital in Morganton, where they worked until near completion of the facility in early 1972. And whereas, the first class of 20 correctional officers received their diplomas in 1972 from Western Pea Mountain Community College, that included Chuck Cottle, William K. Suther, Esper Bean, Jack Ledford, William Lawson, Tommy Wakefield, Stanley Carver, John Johnson, Johnny Brooks, Yates Kincaid, Doyle Shaw, Ray Baker, Major R.M. Jarvis, Ralph Stamey, William Garrison, Deanie Walker, Harper Irvin, Vincent Hudgens, Larry Phillips, and David Rodriguez. And whereas, on May 1, 1972, the first adult minimum custody inmates arrived at Western Correctional Center, with the facility later that year being designated as a youth facility. And during the early summer of 1972, a number of youthful offenders arrived from Polk Youth Center and Hornet. Whereas, since that day in 1972, the staff members that you see here of Western Youth Institution have fulfilled the mission of the North Carolina Department of Public Safety and Juvenile Justice without fail, and provided exemplary service to the citizens of Burke County and the state of North Carolina. And whereas, the 2013 North Carolina General Assembly passed a budget that regretfully included the closure of Western Youth Institution effective January 1, 2014. And whereas, Senator Warren Daniel, Representative Hugh Blackwell, Representative Mike Hager, the Burke County Board of Commissioners, County Manager Brian Steen, county staff, Mayor Mel Cohen, Mayor Jim Hatley, Town Manager Jeff Morris, Scenic District Number 5, and lobbyist Chris Emanuel worked tirelessly advocating for the preservation of Western Youth Institution. And despite these valiant efforts, the arguments of those within the department's own administration ultimately prevail, which we are convinced is a grievous error, and will forever have a negative impact on Burke County and the state of North Carolina. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mainland M. Taylor, Chairman of the Burke County Board of Commissioners, do hereby convey on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, our sincere appreciation to each and every person that has ever worked at Western Youth Institution for their loyal service to Burke County and the state of North Carolina. And to those that are currently employed at Western Youth Institution and are facing the uncertainties of the future, the Board empathizes with you and your families, and will do, and we will do our utmost to ensure the state of North Carolina lives up to the existing departmental policies that will affect you during your transition to other positions within state government or in the private sector. Ms. Bellis, on behalf of the Burke County Board of Commissioners, Mr. Hernandez, Senator, if you will help me present these, we offer this resolution to Western.
The staff at Western Youth, thank you very much for your gallant efforts. Thank you for remembering us, watching over us, and hoping for the best of us and taking action. We are still in the midst of our closure. Our staff are going through, in November, they will be meeting the personnel for the last time, and decisions will be made. We thank you so much for remembering those that went before us. I can tell that I'm at that age now in my career, I'm approaching that 30th year, that the people that you mentioned in this resolution, I knew, some of them very personally. So therefore, a friend of mine told me one time, she's, I was putting down some stuff, and I said, "Well, they're all retired." And she said, "Well, I guess that's an indication you should retire, too." So, but we thank you. It's a legacy, it's a heritage. It is people that work together to do a mission, and not only to do it because it's part of the responsibility, but because it's embedded to do right, and to do it in the way that the department wanted to, but also to be a reflection of the people of Burke County, as well as the state of North Carolina. And we thank you very much. It is a hard thing to go through, but like we're going through it right now, the people that are going through this day by day, step by step, are doing it with the very professionalism that they have served. And I thank those people that went before us, that opened doors for us. That facility's been around for 41 years, and it has been a pleasure to work there, but more importantly, to serve, because that's what we're all about. So thank you for recognizing us this evening, thank you for remembering us, and thank you I can, please continue to remember us as we go on. Some will decide to retire, others will be still seeking employment, maybe, and hopefully everybody will be employed. But we thank you for your time and for what you've done for us.
Very well.
I just want to say a few words on behalf of myself and Chris Crawford, the other Assistant Superintendent of Western Youth. Superintendent of Western Youth, and for all the Western Youth staff. We want to thank you all for the support you have given us through the years, especially this past few months. It's been very hard for us, but we appreciate it. Burke County has really stood by us, including Senator Daniel, Hugh Blackwell. So it's been very trying, very trying several months, but we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, and distinguished members of the public. It is, I guess, with some sadness that we all are here tonight to discuss the closing of Western Youth and to honor those who have served there. I think the, all of us here have lost some sleep over the last few months in trying to deal with this and to come up with cogent arguments that we could make to budget writers as to why we felt like that this was an institution that the state should continue to operate. Burke County has, has a long tradition of service to the state of North Carolina in a number of capacities, whether it's J. Iverson Riddle, the School for the Deaf, Western Piedmont Community College, Broughton Hospital, and of course, our prisons. And I know that that will continue to be our heritage and our legacy. The bright side of this coin is that we're still going to look for opportunities to expand our service to the state of North Carolina, whether it's utilizing this building in some other way with a Western Crime Lab or some other new construction. Certainly when the state decides that it's time that we need another prison, then we'll be banging on their door and saying that we have the best employees and the best location for that. So I do want to thank these employees who I've gotten to know over the past few months for their service to the state, and wish them well. And now, my job and our job as elected officials is to try to, to assist those who are potentially facing job losses in relocating to other positions within state government that are available. And so I'll be working hard on that to make sure that none of them fall through the cracks. And thank you very much.
Thank you. To the board members, do you have a question or comment you'd like to make on this resolution? Johnny, would it be appropriate if you could give us a report where you stand with how many of those employees have been hired?
As of today, we cannot tell you that. We will not know until November the 4th.
Okay.
When we are entertained by state personnel again as to what will be offered to anyone.
Okay. If no question or comment, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt this resolution. 2013.
2013-42. Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor, would you raise your right hand, please? Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Okay, next on the item is Burke County 4H Program Update and Presentation. And this is presented by John Davis, who is the Burke County 4H Agent.
Good evening, Board. Again, my name is John Davis. I'm the 4H Agent here in Burke County with Burke County Cooperative Extension. First, on behalf of our 4Hers that are present with us here tonight and still at home working on their 4H projects, their families, volunteers, our extension staffs, thank you to the board for your continued support of our 4H and Burke County Cooperative Extension programs and for allowing us to present tonight. As you may know, last week, we celebrated National 4H Week, October the 6th through the 12th. And so we're glad tonight to be able to offer you a little glimpse at some of the many things that Burke County Cooperative Extension's 4H program is, is doing. As you may know, 4H is the largest youth-serving organization here in North Carolina. We are very proud that Burke County 4H has a lot to offer in the way of youth programs. No matter what youth are interested in here in Burke County, we believe that we have a program fit for them. The mission of our 4H programs are to offer 4Hers and Burke County youth hands-on learning opportunities that build life skills for them in the future and supplement their current education. Much of our current focus in the 4H program is on science, technology, engineering, and math in the STEM program. And including our STEM programs, we also focus on our traditional 4H standards of leadership, citizenship, community service, and all of those are firmly rooted in all of our 4H programs. Whether our 4H kids are working on a 4H livestock project, a 4H electric project, attending 4H summer day camps, or working on a sewing project, they still learn about working cooperatively with others, how to present themselves, and how to be responsible. Tonight, I've brought a few of our 4Hers along with me tonight to tell you a little bit about what they do, or what they've done this past year in 4H. And all of these youth and volunteers are great examples of how 4H is making the best better in Burke County.
Hello, my name is Molly Suarez, and I serve as the 2013 4H County Council President. As a youth leader for Burke County 4H, it is my duty to encourage my fellow 4Hers and help lead county programs. I also serve as a representative for our county to other district and state 4H events. This year in 4H, I have worked on several citizenship projects. I have helped with several 4H electric, elections, and ran for district office. I have also taught 4H summer workshops and led programs for my club. In June, with 4H Congress in Raleigh, I had the opportunity to visit our local legislators to talk with them about issues involving youth. I also attended the youth summit at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Meeting to discuss more with, more youth issues. In 4H, I'm learning to be a leader and about how important it is to be active in my community. I love seeing how 4H makes the best better in Burke County. My favorite part of 4H is all the things I get to do and wonderful friends I've made. I love the citizenship, leadership, and community service things I get to do. When I started 4H, I was shy and would have never been up here talking right now, but through 4H, I have gained confidence in life skills like public speaking and leadership.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Thompson, and I serve as a 2013 4H County Council Reporter. I'm a member of the Great Adventures 4H Club and the 4H Lego Club, and serve as a club president for both. This year has been a busy year for me in 4H. I've helped plan activities for my clubs and help lead county activities. This summer, I participated in North Carolina 4H Electric Congress for the first time. At Electric Congress, I learned about electrical components, renewable energy, and how our local energy cooperatives work. Last week, during National 4H Week, I volunteered as a junior leader for 4H National Youth Science Day. I helped our 4H agent lead a special GIS mapping experiment with 5th graders at Eiger Elementary. During October and November, more than 300 students in Burke County will participate in this experiment with Burke County 4H. One important thing, one part about the 4H program is offering kids like me hands-on learning in science, technology, engineering, and math. My favorite part about 4H is having the ability to volunteer and help others. Whenever I volunteer, I have the opportunity to meet new people. Thank you.
Hi, my name's James Lamb, and no, I'm not a 4Her. But my wife and I became 4H leaders, and we loved it. We did it for our daughters originally, but then we saw such a diverse opportunity of youth development. They learn by doing in 4H is one of their mottos. Leadership, community service, public speaking, involvement with livestock. Now, unfortunately, my daughter's not able to be here. My youngest daughter, after college, she is now back, and she is now an active 4H leader. So she is giving it on and on. She is the leader of the Posse 4H Club. My favorite thing about 4H is what you're seeing here tonight. Active, participating youth getting involved. So with that, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Sidney Mall, and I serve as the 2013 4H County Council Secretary. I am a member of the Posse 4H Horse Club. This year, I have been very active in the 4H Horse Program. This part, this, this past February and March, I served as a team captain for our 4H Horse Bowl team at our district and state level competitions. I have also entered several horse shows with my horse Woody. Working in the 4H Livestock Horse Project teaches me hands-on about questioning, science, leadership, responsibility, and how to work with others. Another big part of 4H that I have learned from is public speaking, like speeches like this. Public speaking is an important life skill for everyone, and that's one thing all 4Hers have a chance to learn. My favorite part of 4H is the horse program because it teaches me leadership and betters my horse knowledge. Thank you.
This is, as you can tell, just a small sample of the experiences and impacts that our 4Hers have here in Burke County. I'd like to now direct you to the statistics sheet that you have in your packets, just to point out a couple of those facts to you tonight. In 2013, Burke County 4H has reached 2,560 youth with our Burke County 4H programs and activities. In 2014, excuse me, in 2013, more than 1,450 youth have been involved in 4H school enrichment programs and other 4H school-based programs in Burke County public and private schools. In 2012 and 2013, 180 youth participated in Burke County 4H day camps and overnight camps. Burke County has impacted over 700 youth in program collaborations with other county departments, including the Burke County Health Department, Burke County Public Library, and Burke County Sew and Water. To date, more than 230 youth are participating in Burke County 4H community clubs. And for our volunteers, for 2013, 375 adults and 90 youth have volunteered within Burke County 4H programs. For this past year, Burke County 4H volunteers have logged 15,600 hours of volunteer service in the community, which has resulted back in a value to the community of $315,900. As you can see, the 4H program is committed to offering both club opportunities for our youth as well as engaging youth within the school setting. As the 4H agent, I, as you can tell, always very proud and amazed at the dedication and hard work that is presented by our 4H youth. And I'm also very grateful for the contributions of our 4H volunteers and leaders, as well as our community sponsors and partners. I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you have about any of our 4H programs. And again, we want to thank you for the opportunity to present tonight on behalf of National 4H Week.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any question or comment?
Mr. Chairman, not a question, but I'd like to make a comment. John has given me the opportunity to attend a number of functions of 4H. I predict that Nick will be, if he's not president of the United States, Nick, you'll be governor, or something like that, because John has to run him down all the time. I'm just thrilled every time I go over to see Nick's presentation, and the ladies, too. So I'm proud that you've allowed me to do that, and I'm proud of these, these kids.
Thank you.
Any other comment? John, the biggest, one of the big things that sticks out here is, you know, volunteers at the value of $315,900. But the biggest value is actually the impact they have on those kids and what they learn. So we appreciate the hard work of you and all those volunteers and all those many hours they put in. We will accept this report by round of applause of appreciation. Next on the agenda is semi-annual presentations on the performance of janitorial contractor for Burke County facilities, and we will recognize Kathy Kraus.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to give the semi-annual report of the performance of the contracted janitorial services for the Burke County facilities. Over the past six months, we've had only two reported discrepancies of, of any type of services that were not meeting, you know, the standards of what we expected. Under both situations, the problems were resolved without any hesitation beyond the contracting company. I send out survey evaluations during each six-month period to each department head. They report back to me, and in turn, I will report to you any discrepancies that, that continue.
Question or comment to Kathy? Everything's okay.
Everything's okay.
What we love to hear. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the semi-annual janitorial contractor performance report as presented.
Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Next item is WPCC's presentation of financial data for the period of July the 1st through September the 16th, 2013. This will be presented by Sandy Holman, WPCC Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you look at page one in your packet, this is a summary of the college's budget as approved by the trustees of Western Piedmont Community College on September the 9th, 2013, for fiscal year 2013-2014. The college mainly operates through three, three sources that we, we manage. The largest is our state appropriations, and our original appropriation amount is Funds are allocated using three methodologies for community colleges. One is a base allocation, pretty much given to all community colleges, then full-time equivalents, or FTE, which is our enrollment, and performance-based allocations, which is relatively new, where they're giving money based upon student outcomes, which could be graduation, how they do on license exams, persistence, and retention. Enrollment, though, is still the key driver for colleges' formula budgets. Additionally, throughout the year, additional allocations may be awarded for various items, such as customized training projects, where we have projects at certain industries, such as Valdez Weavers or Case Farms, grants that flow through our system office, such as a civics education grant and our Pathways to Employment Grants, which help also with workforce development, and then also longevity pay for our state positions. Our state funds cover all of the administration, instructional, and student support services for the college. In the third column, you'll see our institutional budget, which is our second largest, and this is pretty much anything other than state and county appropriations. They include our federal, state, and local grants, bookstore, our self-supporting courses, student government association, and other specific funds or grants. The federal grants make up the majority of these funds, approximately $8 million, and they include student financial aid, such as the PEL program, the SEOG, which is Supplemental Education Opportunity Grant, the College Work-Study Program. And we also have two large multi-year grants through the Department of Education, our Educational Talent Search, which has been at the college for 20-plus years, and then also a five-year grant that we have now through the Title III, which is strengthening students, which we're doing through advising and faculty development and education. The bookstore generates approximately $1.5 million throughout the year. The second column is our county funds, and they consist mostly of the county appropriations as approved by the Burke County Commissioners. There's also a small amount of funding from rent and interest income. The rent mainly comes from our four-year universities, such as Appalachian State University, Lee's McCray, and Western Carolina University, when they have classes on our campus. There's normally no additional allocations throughout the year from our county funds, and our county funds are spent for maintenance, security... and our county funds are spent for maintenance, security, housekeeping, insurance, and utilities throughout the year. The college also is managing state and county-funded capital improvement projects this fiscal year that include a new maintenance building, a classroom for our emergency service training complex, some campus signage to help with the flow of traffic throughout the campus, and a keyless exterior door system to help with security, which can be locked down electronically at one time. And then also the completion of our HVAC system upgrades, which will include a new chiller that the county is providing additional funding for this year. If you'll go to page two in your package, this is the actual allocations or revenues received and expenditures for each funding source, and there's just a few things to note. One, due to the, the timing restrictions of getting this information in, the information is for two and a half months, which is July 1st, 2013, through September 16th, 2013. So the major expenses, our September payroll and also our utility bills, had not been processed up to this point. Plus, the college operates on a cash basis accounting methodology rather than accrual method, so we record items when we pay for them or when they're expended and when the revenues are actually received. So most of our expenses will come later in the year. Also, since we only have a certain amount of funding each year, the college is more conservative at the beginning of our fiscal year, rather than spending much at the, at the beginning and then not having enough at the end. The college normally has to use some of our county's fund balance due to the timing of payroll needs versus when we actually receive the county appropriations check, so we do transfer some of our fund balance into our regular dispersing account so that we can make sure to meet all of our expenditures throughout the month. But by the end of the year, we try to keep an 8% fund balance, approximately. Also, on our institutional side, currently, as of September the 16th, there was a negative fund balance, but that was due to, this was the time period of our financial aid being processed, and we have to pay that out before asking, drawing that money down from the Department of Education, and there's some timing restrictions there. So that, that is taken care of, and there is a positive fund balance for our institutional funds. If you'll go to page three in your packet, we have taken the county expenditures and drilled down to them in a little further detail to the percentage spent by categories. And you'll notice that salaries and benefits and utilities are the largest categories. Insurance is another large category that the college has, but the majority of our insurance comes due in the end of May and in the June time period, so that will come later in the Are there any questions on the county appropriations or any of the college's budget?
Question or comment from the Commissioners? Here are none. The Chair will entertain a motion. Well, we don't need to do a motion. Excuse me. Sandy, good report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The Board just, no action is required. This is just a standard report.
Thank you. The college certainly appreciates the support from the county. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Next on the agenda is a public hearing, Zoning Mount Amendment, ZMA 213-04. That'll be presented by Scott Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished Board members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I have one item before you, and that's zoning map amendment 2013-04. And this zoning map amendment request is to rezone one parcel of land, which is located off of Martin Fish Pond Street, and it's also identified as pin number 277-261-0301 for the record. The total acreage of the parcel is two acres, and this request is to rezone, is to rezone this property from R2 residential to industrial in order to allow industrial use and the expansion of an existing industry, which is also known as Contain. And the applicants are here, and following my presentation, they have asked to address the Board and to express more of their plans and to answer any questions you might have on what they anticipate on doing. As far as the site analysis goes, the surrounding zoning is industrial, and it's also residential too. The adjoining parcel to the west is a vacant lot zoned industrial. To the north is the existing Contain warehouse, and it's also zoned industrial. The adjoining parcel to the south is zoned residential too, and it is vacant. The parcel to the east and across Martin Fish Pond Street is zoned residential too, and it has an existing dwelling on it. There are no known streams or FEMA-designated flood planes on the parcel. The parcels are not located within a water supply watershed. The property records show that the parcels are served by private wells and private septic systems. And because of the nature of the expansion being a warehouse, there is not a need to examine or look into the extension of sewer systems to the site. The request is in conformity with the comprehensive plan, and I have prepared a statement of zoning consistency for your consideration. The 2003 I-40 corridor plan is the most recent land use plan available for this area. As with the 1993 comprehensive plan, the I-40 corridor plan establishes policies as well as recommendations to establish areas for future industrial development. The 2003 I-40 plan depicts the area in which the subject parcel is located as proposed industrial. The plan is still appropriate for the area and in keeping with the intent of this designation. The area has a history of industrial and residential usage, and all surrounding properties exhibit similar characteristics. Existing and proposed zoning categories are consistent with accepted zoning standards and the urbanizing character of the area. A few of the comments that staff had are really in support of this request, and we believe that the zoning is probably an appropriate change to that parcel because of the nature and what's going on in the area. But a few of the reasons that we felt that way is that the adjacent property has an existing industrial structure, which was constructed prior to adoption of the zoning ordinance. The existing industrial use within the structure and land were also in existence before the zoning ordinance. Other industrial uses exist in the immediate area. The 2003 I-40 corridor land use plan recommends that certain properties surrounding Exit 118 be rezoned to industrial. Any commercial industrial development of the parcels would have to go through the site plan review process and be approved by the Community Development Department prior to being established. So the staff recommendation for this is considering the existing industrial use of multiple parcels, adjoining parcel ID number 277-261-0301. This office recommends approving the rezoning request in order to allow the industrial use to expand and increase the economic tax base of Burke County, and it's also recommended by the 2003 land use plan. Staff would also recommend that no entrance to the new development be located along Martin Fish Pond Street, and that access should be provided through the existing warehouse, and a buffer should be established along the east property line of Martin Fish Pond Road. We did have one citizen at the planning board meeting that lived adjacent to this property that was concerned about the look of this. This is not a conditional rezoning, though. It's just a straight rezoning, and that's why the applicant has asked to address the Board following my presentation. The Planning Board did meet on August 22nd, 2013, and they voted unanimously, 5-0, to recommend that the Board of Commissioners consider approving zoning act amendment 2013-04.
Thank you, Ms. Yard.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We will open the public hearing. Anybody here to speak on this agenda, hon?.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has indicated that he would like to speak, and I have his card.
Mr. Byrd?
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen.
Would you state your name for the record, please, sir?
I'm sorry.
Just state your name for the record.
My name is Ed Byrd, B-Y-R-D. I am the owner of a business in eastern Burke County along this Martin Fish Pond Street for the last 38 years. I moved here from Raleigh 38 years ago. I had gone to school at Lenora Ryan College, had been, worked for a company in Philadelphia, and decided to move back to North Carolina and open this business. So when we started the business, we were mostly a manufacturer, and we made containers that people in the moving and storage and freight forwarding business used. But nothing lasts forever, of course. So over the years, we have migrated into both a manufacturer and a third-party logistics company. We made packaging. Now, we make packaging, we pack products, and we ship products. So it's been a, the best decision we've made, because as I said, nothing lasts forever. So we, we wanted to be in the third-party logistics business. We started out with probably 10 employees in Hickory or in eastern Burke County, and we now have probably 250 throughout, in, in North Carolina, Statesville, Troutman, North Carolina, Huntersville, North Carolina, Charleston, South Carolina, McAllen, Texas. And so we have been constrained where we were. When I bought this building 30-some years ago, we've been pretty much landlocked, and we had no space to room, to grow, as Scott said. Then there was no zoning in Burke County. So, so we have been there for this many years and unable to grow much there. We had to do, move some pro, programs that we have to Statesville and other towns because we had facilities there. So this year, we were able to acquire some adjoining property, which will allow us to expand some. It'll allow us to take some trucks off of the road that are going down Martin Fish Pond Street and, and bring it in the back of our, of our facility. We have little employee parking there. They're all, we parked right on the street almost, so from the site plan, you can see that we've been able to designate some employee parking and get them off of the street. So in short, it'll reduce truck traffic. We want to, we run a one-shift operation, so there's no trucks or anything after, after hours. And we've got a loyal workforce, and we've been lucky enough to grow and prosper, and we want to, we want to stay in Burke County. I'll be glad to answer any questions or...
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. If my, my impose on the Commissioners, I, he stole part of my thunder, Mr. Byrd did, but he invited me down to take a tour, and I had made the mistake of thinking this was a pallet company. And what they really are are freight specialists, and they take tractor trailer units dependent on the model, and they make pallets, and they put three or four of these units in one freight container to be shipped overseas. And he, he educated me on a lot of things. One of them I didn't realize is that Freightliner was a 20 billion, that's with a B, industry for the state of North Carolina. That is his biggest client. They hope to build this. They do have some time down the road, want to get a little more water to their situation, if I understand it. And he has already told you that they have several locations down in, near around Statesville. They have locations in Texas and South Carolina. They employ over 250 employees. This addition in eastern Burke County, around Hildebrand, will add 10 to 12 employees for Burke County. It is so unique and so embarrassing at the same time to see some of the entities in Burke County that we just don't know about, and that was one of them. And I apologize to Mr. Byrd. I, you know, I'm almost in his backyard and did not know they were doing that kind of business in Burke County. So my hat's off to you. Somebody's doing something right within your company, and...
We'd invite any of you to come. We'd love to, we'd love to show it off. It's like a symphony, isn't it?
Yes.
With the way the guys work.
But I wanted to tell you, if you ever want to go take a tour down there, I'm sure Mr. Byrd will accommodate you, and it'll be a pleasant tour. Any other question or comment? Well, wait a minute. Excuse me, we haven't closed out. Anybody else here to speak to the issue? None? We will close the public hearing session, and any comment from the Commissioners? Here are none. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt an ordinance amending the Burke County zoning map as it relates to ZMA 2013-04, and adopt statement of zoning consistency as follows. The 2003 I-40 corridor plan is the most recent land use plan available for this area. As with the 1993 comprehensive plan, the I-40 corridor plan establishes policies and recommendations to establish areas for future industrial development. The 2003 I-40 plan depicts the area in which the subject parcel is located as proposed industrial, as noted in page 20B. The plan is still appropriate for the area and in keeping with the intent of the designation. The area has a history of industrial and residential usage, and all surrounding properties exhibit similar characteristics. Existing and proposed zoning categories are consistent with accepted zoning standards and the urbanizing character of that area.
Thank you, Johnny. All those in favor of this motion, raise your right hand, please. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Scott. Item eight, informal public comments. Madam Chair, did anybody sign up? Good. Consent agenda. We will recognize our county manager, Brian Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, you have 11 items of consent agenda. The first is BDI, acceptance of NC Department of Commerce grant for economic development in the amount of $18,000. Item two, clerk acceptance of CDBG progress report. Item three, EMS resolution related to the surplus of ambulances number 28 and 21. Item four, general services, Anna Street CDBG project administrative contract with Western Piedmont Council of Government and related project ordinance. Item five, general services, project closeout final change order at the HRC Building for the HVAC renovations. Item six is from the Sheriff's Office, and I do want to express a message I got from the Sheriff that he expresses his appreciation to the Commissioners for adoption of this resolution. The resolution is in support of naming the Enola Road Bridge in memory of fallen officer, firefighter Kelly Michael Kincaid. Item seven, tax office EMS collections report for August 2013. Item eight, tax office release and refund report for August 2013. Item nine, tax office tax collections report for August 2013. Item 10, TDA, Appointment to Tourism Development Authority. And item 11, Western Piedmont Council of Government Administration Contract with Western Piedmont Council of Government for Leviton Manufacturing Company Incorporated Rule Center Planning Grant reuse. That concludes your consent agenda, gentlemen.
Thank you, County Manager. Any question or comment? Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Wayne. All those in favor, would you raise your right hand? Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Okay. Items for decision, general services, CND landfill expansion, passive methane gas vent installation. Carson Fisher will present this.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor, and members of the Board. We have submitted an application to the state solid waste section for an expansion of our construction demolition landfill. During that review process, the state's solid waste section had raised some concerns about landfill gas that was migrating from the closed-out MSW landfill there at Johns River, adjacent to the proposed CND sale. Our consultant, Joyce Engineering, has completed a study to define that gas migration and how to... to mitigate its effect on the groundwater. That study and mitigation plan has now been approved by the State Solid Waste Section. Next step is for us to construct the passive gas vents as presented in the attached proposal that's been prepared and submitted by Joyce Engineering. Total approximate cost is one hundred thousand dollars. As Mr. Van Burbach pointed out to you at the pre-agenda meeting, these vents must be installed based on state requirement for scheduled by January thirteenth, 2014. And due to the fact that, at the time, the current budget was not, or had been prepared, we did not have any idea what the state was going to actually require us to do, nor the cost associated with that. That money is not included in the current budget, and staff would request that you appropriate a hundred thousand dollars from the solid waste disposal fund balance to fund that project. Be glad to answer any questions board members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Questions or comments from board members? Carson, if I might ask one, on that appropriation from solid waste disposal fund, when we take that hundred out, what will that leave us?
Based on discussions with Paul Ims, Finance Director and County Manager, this afternoon, we will still have in the neighborhood of a little bit more than two million dollars, is that correct, in fund balance?
Two million?
Two million. Let me throw a caveat out that we talked about. There is a requirement for the state that we have approximately five million dollars available for clo, what's called closure and post-closure, which is closing the landfill actually out when we're done, and then post-closure is taking care of everything, whether we have groundwater contamination, things like that, for a matter of thirty years. That cost is estimated at five million dollars. So in essence, that post-closure, post-closure, at this point, we would be three million dollars short, but the two million is the cash available to go towards that and other expenses, if I've answered that correctly, Mr. Ims.
And I know you've told us, but for the record, we, that landfill will be usable for how many more years should last?
A lot longer than any of us will be around.
All right. Any other question? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a two-part motion. The first part of my motion is to approve the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars from the solid waste disposal and fund balance account. The second part of my motion will be to approve and accept amendment number oh-four-seven-zero dash one-two between Burke County and Joyce Engineering for the construction of methane gas vents, and authorize our county manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the board, subject to review and/or revision by our county attorney.
Thank you, Johnny. All those in favor, would you raise your right hand? Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number eleven is reports and comments from county commissioners. We'll start all the way on the right with our attorney.
I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things. One, I want to tell you that the project at the courthouse, the HVAC, is going very well. I think that they will have courtrooms one and two completed by the end of this week, with courtroom three by the end of next week, and I would ask that you start looking at your calendar for the possibility of us having some event to formally reopen the courtrooms in the courthouse. Maybe on Friday afternoon, the eighth of November, around three o'clock, the court system should be pretty well complete with their activities, and I just want to go ahead and put that bug in your ear. Do want to also have Paul Ims come up and tell you a little bit about an issue that may be developing that's related to the federal government and the Department of Health and DSS and some programs that they provide, and if a decision is not made fairly quickly to turn loose to some federal funds, we may have to take some action as a county related to the programs that they provide.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. The purpose right now is to talk about the issues that are going on in Washington, or maybe I should say, not going on in Washington, and the impact that it may have on the county programs that were funded by federal dollars and how we address those. We've got two departments that are impacted. We have Social Services and Health Department. I've actually asked Margaret Schumate from the Department of Social Services and Rebecca McLeod with the Health Department to gather the most current information that they have available and to share that with you tonight. So I'd like to invite those two ladies up and just brief you on what issues they're facing, or the county will have to face unless there's some resolution occurs in the near term.
Would you like to go first?
She'd be, she'd be right here.
Okay.
Yes, before beating. Good afternoon. Everybody knows about what's going on in Washington. Well, we were noticed on October the tenth, a letter stating that we have funding at Social Services that's going to be cut, or Social Services block grant funding is one of those. And that funding does adult daycare, stay-at-home services, children's, special children adoptions, guardianships, and there's other SSBG services goes along with that. Well, when they told us some of the funding that we were not going to get reimbursed for in September and to be paid in October, our amount went up to around fifty-eight thousand dollars that we would have, be receiving funds, but we're not going to receive those funds now because of this federal shutdown. Now, they're are telling us that we may receive these funds back, but they say we may. There's no guarantee on that at all. Also, on daycare, that is one of the funding that has been cut drastically. We received a letter Friday, I believe Friday, that that funding is usually two million, two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars. Well, they cut that over a million dollars. We have only three-hundred-and-three thousand dollars in that pot of money right now. We are paying September's invoices, which is a hundred-and-fifty thousand. We will pay October's invoices for the daycare, and then that's it. If this is not resolved by Thursday, we will have no money to pay daycare for November, being paid out in December. We are moving some of the fun, the children around that can go into Smart Start money, and we can only do that on four and five-star daycare centers, but we are doing that, but that still is not going to help us. If this is not resolved, then there's some children that we cannot pay to go to daycare out. That's also Burke County schools, too, their after-school program. Also, we have a funding in daycare that furnishes two of our employees' salaries. As of right now, the county's paying that. We are in the hole. That, that one time, that was ninety-three thousand, four sixty-four. Well, they cut that down to thirty-nine thousand, three sixty-seven. We've already spent thirty-two thousand, six oh-five. So as of right now, we are in the hole for September. The county is paying for that. Now, all this can be, can stop, and if they would get their act together, and, you know, we'll get this money back, we're hoping. But these are some of the things that does need to be talked about. I brought Tracy Kincaid with me, and she can talk about WorkFirst. That's tannif money that is being cut. The WorkFirst program is a program that Tracy needs to tell youn's about because that affects their, our clients that's on WorkFirst.
Thank you. Just to get a little bit of information before I go into WorkFirst, we do have a breakdown of the children receiving services, sorry. We do have a breakdown of children receiving services. Currently, there's seven-hundred-and-ninety-two children in Burke County receiving childcare services. Three-hundred-and-thirty are already funded by Smart Start. We have about sixty children who are Smart Start eligible and have the option to move to a Smart Start facility if their parents choose to do so. We also have two-hundred-and-fifty-four children in Smart Start facilities that can be funded by Smart Start. So after you take all of that, and Smart Start has also agreed to allow us to move these children over and help us out for three months, but even after doing that, there are approximately a hundred-and-fifty children that, who are not Smart Start eligible, and we would have to suspend the services on those if funding is not available. WorkFirst, we have received instructions from Department of Health and Human Services that we are to continue to take WorkFirst applications, but we cannot process and issue benefits for, until federal funds become available. We have also, at the direction of Department of Health and Human Services, we have suspended the WorkFirst employment services, which means that our clients on WorkFirst are exempt from work requirements. WorkFirst payments will not be made in November unless a resolution is reached, and the state will be sending out a mass mailing notifying the WorkFirst recipients that WorkFirst benefits will be suspended, and there will be no payments after November the first. We have two-hundred-and-sixty-six recipients in Burke County receiving a WorkFirst check. Four staff members have been reassigned because, since the clients do not have to participate and do the work requirements, then they're not having to come in for their interviews and that sort of thing. They're still, we're still taking applications, but we have reassigned them in other areas to help out in the food stamp department, the Medicaid, which we're getting a lot of applications from the Affordable Care Act and that sort of thing. So we have reassigned them to train as universal workers. Because we haven't met our MOE yet, these positions are currently a hundred percent county-funded, and if we move them over, we can get fifty percent reimbursement while they're working in Medicaid and food stamps.
Any question?
So Margaret, let me see if I got this straight. We're ninety thousand dollars in the hole that we're probably not going to get back?
As far as I know. That's what, that's what they're telling me in Raleigh to say, as far as we know as of now.
So we're upfronting how much money per month?
Upfronting, in the month of September...
Yes.
It would be around fifty-eight thousand dollars that we should have got back from federal, but we're not going to get back.
Yeah. Excuse me, Johnny. You say you're not, how do we know we're not? You're going to request it, though, right?
Oh, we've already billed to get it, but a letter that they sent to us told us that those funds are cut. We were not going to get those funds for September.
That's for the SS, SSBG.
SSBG and some tannif.
So how about the thirty-two thousand?
The, that money, no. We've done, spent that money, and that's gone. It's not, you know, we don't have it. If they come back and reallocate and give us their money, you know, we will get that, but as of now, no, that's gone.
What about food stamps?
Today, I talked to someone about food stamps, and he said that that is up for grabs. That's, and that's all he would say.
But you're taking applications for all the programs?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
But you can't move on the applications?
No. And another thing I'm a little worried about is because, you know, we have to meet our MOE, and if these individuals are not working in those programs, then our MOE, when we meet it, is going to have to be later on down in the, in the fiscal year. So this has got to be resolved soon.
We have already, excuse me, we have already implemented a waiting list in the daycare because of the possibility that we may have to suspend services. We didn't feel like it was fair to people to put them on the program and then the next day pull them off. So we've implemented a waiting list because one of the things that we keep hearing on the conference call, and I, this is quote, I wrote it down as the quote, they said, "Funding is more likely to be reimbursed retroactively for WorkFirst and childcare than the SSBG, but it's not guaranteed."
You do have a money tree outside your office, is it?
All the programs are going to suffer. Which one's going to be hurt the worst?
SSBG is going to be hurt the worst.
I don't know, Johnny, Burke County, if we're going to have...
That's adult services, guardianships, adult daycare. There are some, a little bit of foster care that they code as SSBG, but that's the program that's going to be hurt the worst, and that's the program that they may cut.
My question is this. When you got notification that these programs would not be funded, why do they continue?
These programs are mandated by the state, whether we get funding from the federal government or state or anybody, they're mandated, and we have to do them by social services standards.
Well, if we're mandated to do it, then the federal government should be providing the bucks.
I agree with you.
And the state should be, come in second.
I agree with you.
So why are we providing the service if we're not getting, we're not getting the funds for it?
It's mandated, and we have to do it.
We haven't got, you know, any direction other than WorkFirst. They've told us that we still have to take applications, but we are not to process them. But they have not given, they told us they were going to send out mass mailings to the WorkFirst recipients to let them know that their benefits would be suspended, but they have not done that yet, and they have not given us the authority to do that.
Well, I'm still at a loss. If it's not funded, it's mandated, why is it dumped on the people of Burke County?
I understand. I agree. But I don't have the answer.
One thing we could do, we could stop the program and see how, what kind of mandate they have on it. But taxpayers in this county, they have no responsibility to fund these programs, and you go back to when these programs started way back when, the federal government, they offered these programs, but they offered a caveat to states, and if you'll participate in these programs for X, Y, and Z, we'll give you the money, and then you only pick up so much more of the funding for those programs. So the deal was between the federal government and the state.
I think, excuse me, Dad, one of the things that really concerns me, if, if the state or federal government's sitting down there and saying, well, we don't have to do it because Burke County's going to step up and do it, they could go on forever. And you start a president that, Lord knows where it would end. But anyhow, I understand the desperate situation you're in, and we'll have hopes and fears that it will be resolved shortly, very shortly.
Well, it'll be resolved by Thursday at noon because Republicans always cave as to what they need to do, and they don't have the whatchamacallit to stand up and continue to fund the people of this country.
I know every county's been affected by this. Have you, are you, are you being pressured? Not pressured. Have you received any communication that you should approach the counties for funding?
No.
No. Most of the, you know, I don't want to say most. Some of the surrounding counties have already suspended their daycare services. We just need to know if that's what, what you want us to do. I mean, we, like I said, we've got a hundred-and-fifty, you know, children that we're, that we're talking about, so obviously, if we do that, we'll, I'm sure that we'll, you will hear from them.
But we have enough money to continue to run the daycare program until when?
We have enough money for, through the end of October, because we have money to pay October and November, and if, you know, Smart Start has agreed to let us move some of these children over so that out of the seven-hundred-and-ninety-two children, only one-hundred-and-fifty would have to be suspended, and that's because they do not meet the Smart Start criteria.
But through October, that's our upfront money that we're not guaranteed to get back, right?
No, sir. We'll get that October money.
You get to October, okay.
Yes, sir.
Good.
But we don't have the money for those hundred-and-fifty children past October thirty-first, and we ha, if we're going to suspend those, that's another thing that we have to look at. We, we have to give a ten-day notice before we do any adverse action. The state is giving waivers to counties, but obviously, you know, to do the right thing, I would like to give families as much time as we possibly can. We may not be able to give them the ten days, but since they have to make other arrangements, it would, it would be nice if we could give them more than one day's notice. it would, it would be nice if we could give them more than one day's notice.
Mr. County Manager and Legal Advisor, if this is not ended by Friday, we probably need to call an emergency meeting early next week.
Well, we'll, we'll take this up at the 22nd when we come back from the recess of this meeting. I think that will be sufficient, and by then, we will know what is up and whether the programs go on. And this is really confusing. You've got some programs that have this problem, you've got other programs that they got money to get through October, but they don't have money to get through November. One of the programs that you did, you provided the services in September before all this mess started, and now after the fact, you're getting hoodwinked out of the money. I use that as a term, but it's, it's now, you know, so our employees haven't done anything wrong. They provided services in September before the, the issues with the federal government started, and now they're being told, you know, just out the money, or we don't guarantee that you're going to get reimbursed, but we're not saying you're not going to get reimbursed. And that puts us in quite a precarious predicament that at some point in time, and if we don't have an answer fairly soon, we will need to come back to you for a decision about the suspension of certain services, not only with DSS, but the Health Department and possibly some services with the senior center for, for meals and things like that. Again, we will know a little bit more in the next few days, and if we need to, then when we come back, we'll ask you for official action.
I don't want to belabor the point, but if things go sour, how are you going to communicate with, with the public? I mean, what, what is your, do you have a contingency plan of some kind of how to, to get the word out of what's going to happen? Have you all met daily on this?
Well, we're, we're in constant conference calls, obviously. We've had a lot of conference calls. The WorkFirst would be receiving a, a mass mailing from the state. The daycare, we would send them, the families, a, a letter, notice letting them know. And if, if, you know, we're hopeful that this won't happen, but if there's anything that happens with the Food and Nutrition Services program, they've told us on the conference call that that, that would be like public service announcements, it wouldn't be like individual mailings, be public service posters, that kind of thing.
The state told us to issue a waiting list, to stop issuing and to put everybody on the waiting list. So we did that for two days. People got mad and called Washington and said, "Why is North Carolina the only state who has stopped issuing?" And lo and behold, they found the money again. The money was there all along, but they found the money again. So we are now, we reissued, and we had put 115 people on the waiting list for WIC. And whenever they lifted that Friday morning, we now have all but six people with their food packages, which is wonderful. The problem with WIC at the end of the month, we don't have any county money with that program. So I'm praying really very hard that those people in Washington will get their act together, just as Margaret said, because we don't have a contingency plan for that except for, we've talked to the staff about emergency shutdown furlough for nine people, because we won't run them because there's not any money. On the other side, with our maternal-child health block grant money, which is also federal money that we get in, we have already figured out that we are going to have a deficit that they won't pay us back for, $31,828 in maternity and $46,760 in family planning, which is a total of $78,588. The further this goes out, because pretty much all of ours is salary, and those are the clinic programs that we can't just stop because that would be abandonment of care, and people could sue the county. So as this goes further, we do get our Medicaid money in, we do get our fees in, we're on track with what we're doing. We're hoping that this does not stay for a long period of time. We do have contingency plans in place. We can present those at a later time. But just to let you know, we're working on it, too. We're not sitting on the laurels. We're trying to figure out what's the best way, and that will have the least amount of impact on the county and the, the people that we serve, because they don't have enough as it is. So we just wanted to inform you, and thank you for letting us take time. I know it was a long meeting. This is important to us because we don't know what to do.
Rebecca, I've got a good question for you. You probably can't answer it. If you're going to be charged, why can't we charge the federal government that they would be abandoning the care?
Well, you know, anything's possible. We do that, JR.
Eat bacon soup.
Eat bacon soup. That would be true. They can't. So trying not, we're trying to be as positive we can with the employees, because that's the theme across the state, is to be positive with the employees and be positive with the public. And we let the public know through public service announcements what we have going on.
We appreciate your positiveness.
And what's the total, Rebecca, that we might not get back from your department? $78,000?
$588,000. But I have a plan for that. So you wouldn't have to worry about that.
Seventy, okay.
But we know we're not getting it back. But if Paul let me do what I want, we can do that, or y'all will let me do, we can talk about that later.
Okay, Paul, do you need to do a quick wrap-up?
Now, you hear all the doom and gloom, and services are going to be affected, and one of the issues that we're going to have to face is the employees, our employees who are working in these programs that are funded by the federal dollars. You know, how are we going to deal with those people once the funding, you know, runs out in October, or, you know, even earlier on some things? You know, is the county going to pick up, you know, the tab for any of those positions? Are we going to have to look at, you know, either having to furlough, moving people around in programs? One of the issues we're going to have to deal with is the, you know, what percentage of funding do these people receive in the programs they are leaving, and what percentage are they going to? And does that mean there's going to be county dollars going in to fund the, the salary and benefits that we didn't used to do? And is the, how's the county going to deal with that? And so if this, you know, takes longer than this week, then, you know, we're going to have to decide how we're going to handle the, the employee part of that, not just the services to the citizens issue.
Do them like the federal government did.
Yeah, that's an option.
That's right.
But anyway, you know, thank you for your time. We just wanted to let you know sort of the, because the news changes, you know, constantly, so we just want to let you know where we are and some decisions you may have to deal with, you know, pretty soon. Thanks.
Thank all of you. See, where were we? Were you through?
Yes, sir.
I just find it very disturbing that the people that need to help the most, but then, Paul, you said it's going to hurt some of our employees, which is also troubling. I, I haven't read anything, though, in the paper, seen anything on the news that they've withheld the salaries of Congress or the Senate yet. Maybe they ought to do that.
Maybe we could vote to do that. What do you think?
I think we all ought to vote for that.
The, the one thing that I have tonight is I just wanted to forewarn all those bachelors who wanted to marry Kay.
Mary Kay?
The old song, the old, you know, on top of old Smokey that they courted too slow. Let's give Kay a round of applause. She got married Saturday afternoon. Thank you. Johnny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only report I have is that I attended the Valleys Town Council meeting last week and to talk about our, our presentation of the resolution for Western Youth and, and thank them for their support, their monetary support, and their support for the families in Valleys that worked at the facility also with their 911 center. They passed the, wasn't a resolution, was it?
It regarded as an agreement for how the employees would be treated across.
Right. Agreement, how the employees would be treated in Valleys. So it's very, very thrilled with the way the county was going to handle the employment of some of the Valleys people that was going to be employed at the 911 center. And the mayor sent his regards to us and thanked us for being a partner with them on, on everything. That's my report.
Thank you, Johnny. Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Jack?
I've got a couple of things. We're supposed to be having a work session come Tuesday. Is there a general, agenda for that program, or?
Yes.
Set to come?
Yes.
Will it be available in sufficient time if we need to ask questions about, or ask department heads on input?
Kay was going to pass out that at the, at this time, I guess. Couple of things that was presented by some of you are not on the list. We needed to do a little background on a couple of them, and some of them, we do not control either side, and it's probably going to have to be an agreement from those entities instead of us. I collected, if you will look at that just a second, Madam Clerk, I will go first, if that's okay. I took all the requests from the commissioners, and I have placed them on this sheet. There's a priority high, there's a priority medium, and there's a priority low. There's an example right at the first. And all you need to do is just check which ones you think have the highest priority, which ones are medium, and which one are low, and that is how we'll determine which one's first, which are second, and which are third. So my guess is we will only handle maybe two to three items per work session. Again, depending on how much information is needed to discuss that topic. And you can get those back to Kay within a couple of days, and we'll be rolling. Kay, did you want to comment on that?
On the survey?
Yes.
I'd be happy to mail it to you electronically, if you would prefer.
Okay.
The second thing that I'd like to talk about or bring up, Maxine and I went over to Morgan Heights Friday and drove around that facility over there. And I don't know if, if you all have visited that place, and it's down in the hole, you can't hardly see it until you drive the streets over there. But I was really surprised at the number of buildings over there and businesses that are going to open in that facility here in Morgan. I don't have, I didn't count the buildings, but it's amazing, is all I can say about the place. City of Morgan needs to get some cadavers for whatever they put into that project to make it happen. But it's, it's a fantastic facility.
Thank you, Jack. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Tomorrow is National Bosses Day. I'd like to wish you all a happy Bosses Day early.
Thank you. I don't think there's any reason for a closed session, but we do want to recess.
Vacancy announcement.
Oh, I missed that. Vacancy announcement, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We currently have the following vacancies on our boards and committees: the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, the Council on Aging, Juvenile Prime Prevention Council, Board of Equalization and Review, Region E Development Corporation, the Burke County Planning Board, and the City of Morganton's Board of Adjustment for the ETJ area. Be happy to speak with anyone about any of those positions. Feel free to give me a call.
Any question or comment about vacancies? We will have a need to recess for a few minutes and then come back and open session, and there will be no action taken during this recess. No, no, sir.